Oh, we almost made it to the end of the meeting.
Almost.
Yeah, we were running like-
I know, we were going really fast. Yay, we might be out here for-
It's like crazy.
Gary's over.
Gary, what are you doing over there?
I don't know. Got onto Pandora.
Okay, injury timeout. Ray Briggs has Gussie and he's getting her taken care of. And she's laughing and talking, so it's all good signs.
Good!
So, now we'll hear from Jennifer.
So anyhow, I just wanted to start with the fact that I think that the partnership has been a win-win for the city and for the Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program, because we're all about protecting the harbor, which is the foundation of this community, its quality of life, its economy. And we very much appreciate the city's work to do that and helping to support its efforts. So just very quickly, for those of you who are not familiar, I know, of course, our city council is, we were formed in 1995. We're one of 28 congressionally-designated national estuaries in the United States. And because of that designation, we do receive special funding and support from the federal government through the U.S. EPA under the Clean Water Act to protect and restore water resources in this area. And that usually is around $600,000 annually, but we also get other sources of funding to augment that, so we have roughly a million-dollar budget. Where we work is a 4,700-square-mile area. It encompasses all the way from Venice down to Benita Springs and inland into Winter Haven. So numerous estuaries, not just Charlotte Harbor, but also Lemon Bay, down on Roberts Bay, Pine Island, Kalusahatchee, San Carlos Bay, down to Estero Bay. Many rivers are also included. The Maaka, the Peace, the Title, Kalusahatchee, and Estero Rivers are in our watershed area. And we represent numerous inland and coastal communities, including eight counties and more than 10 cities. What we try to do is we try to address four priority problems. And this is not the staff. This is the collective of the program policy committee, which is comprised of the different cities and counties that are members of our program. And we have Councilman Wine as the representative for the city of Punta Gorda. So collectively, the policy committee sets the priorities for the program and how its funds are used. They had identified four priority problems they wanted us to address, which is hydrological alteration, water quality degradation, fish and wildlife habitat loss, and stewardship gaps. And they wanted us to work on addressing those issues through restoration, research, education, and advocacy. Again, we have many partners, not just federal, state, and local governments, but also private entities, including business leaders and industry groups. So this is just a small representation. You can see your new branding there on the list of some of the groups that participate in our program. And really, what we do is we try to collaborate as a public-private partnership. We're consensus-based, non-regulatory, and science-based, and we are able to leverage the funds we receive from our governmental partners to get private contributions and in-kind services, where we're able to get $35 worth of restoration for every dollar we receive in governmental assistance. So that's a huge benefit, I think, for local governments to contribute. How we fit into the big picture is we were designed to dovetail into the Greater Everglades restoration effort. We cover the western Everglades with the Kalusahatchee River. So you can see on the left-hand side there a diagram from when we were formed and how we were really intended to fit and complement that larger effort that's underway. And of course, our work area covers the entire city of Punta Gorda area and the watershed that drains down into the city. So we align with the city's goals. There's numerous comp plan, conservation, and coastal management element objectives that align with the CHNEP's objectives, including improving water quality, enhancing public water supply, restoring flowways, managing storm and wastewater better, and raising community awareness. And there is actually specific language that talks about partnering with the Charlotte Harbor National Estuary Program in your comp plan. So our support of Punta Gorda to date, so far, we've spent over $150,600 directly on restoration projects within the city limits. That's not counting what we're doing in the harbor and outside the city limits that obviously indirectly benefits the city. We are spending about $388,000 on Charlotte Harbor restoration projects, including doing nutrient loading studies, water quality monitoring, ongoing oyster restoration, which we've partnered very closely with the city and other partners on shoreline surveys and other things of that nature. We also really try to support initiatives locally that engage the public and support public outreach. So the Trails That Teach and the Pedal and Learn initiatives by Team Punta Gorda were funded through our micro grant programs. And also, our Nature Park Wetlands project by the city has gotten public outreach grants. So how we see ourselves, we're continuing to work on direct water quality restoration initiatives, but we also are doing our environmental education efforts. Our Harbor Happenings magazine goes out routinely, and we try, and this next issue will be highlighting the city of Punta Gorda's resiliency efforts. We're going to, again, try to highlight different partners and different issues and what they're doing to support these common objectives we have as a region. And also, we host a Charlotte Harbor Nature Festival. We just recently had that, 1,500 people came to it. Next year, it's going to be in Lashley Park, so we're really excited to have it down here in the city. Just kind of moving along here, I just wanted to really highlight that one of the things we're doing besides our ongoing Water Atlas site, which takes all the data that's collected by different entity and puts it on one publicly accessible website called the Charlotte Harbor Water Atlas, we're actually digesting that information and putting out fact sheets. I put some over there to pass around for the two watersheds that overlap the city boundaries, but it's just to give you a quick snapshot on what areas are experiencing high nutrient levels or high bacteria levels, where are your outstanding Florida waters that are supposed to have special protection against any degradation in water quality? We hope to produce these at least annually, if not biannually, to give our policy leaders throughout the region the information they need to know how to direct their resources to protect their water resources. So we still have a lot of work to do in Charlotte Harbor. Generally, it is one of the healthier estuaries in southwest Florida, but as you can see from these fact sheets, we do have a lot of nutrient and bacteria issues still that we are trying to address. And we're working with different entities like Charlotte County and their Septic to Sewer Initiative to try to get funds to convert septics where possible to reduce that nutrient loading and bacteria loading. And then again, we also have some outstanding Florida waters. These waters are supposed to be protected against any degradation, but unfortunately, some of the outstanding Florida waters in our areas are now not meeting state water quality standards. And so we have mapped those so that you can be aware of where those are. In closing, Punta Gorda is a valued and critical partner to the CHNEP. We are committing to keeping you informed. Please never hesitate to call upon us if we can be of assistance to you. We are continuing to work to protect and restore Punta Gorda's resources, especially its water resources and the harbor. And we're also here to assist your efforts to reach your water protection goals. So we just recently had a wonderful day out with your staff to talk about what the city's been doing with other entities from around the region and really highlight, people from Collier County came up to Punta Gorda to go around with us to see what the city's been doing to implement green infrastructure and stormwater practices, best practices. So it's really an opportunity for us to help you share the information and also get the information from other communities who might have something worthwhile for you to implement. And just, and final slide here is just showing you that together we've made a difference. These are from the Tribune Oyster Restoration Areas. In our first year, we had over 380,000 oysters recruit on that. That's 19 million gallons of water being filtered every day that wasn't being before through those oysters. And we actually had the birders, who are routinely going out there, have the first documented instance of oyster catchers being sighted in that area. So really exciting to see this kind of restoration results. We just finished our second annual monitoring, and I know that the Nature Conservancy, who we've been partnering with, is going to at your next council meeting, give you the latest results on that. But it's just been a pleasure to work with the city and these other entities to get this type of restoration, and I think we're already seeing really positive results. So with that, happy to answer any questions you have.
So as far as the county comp plan, are you in that as well? Like, does Chenep work closely with Charlotte County?
We do, yes. And we just actually did a presentation not long ago to the Board of County Commissioners, updating them on our efforts there, and we'd be happy to share that with you if you're interested in that presentation as well.
Sure, you can send it to us. It'd be interesting. Yep. Any other comments, Nancy?
I guess just a question. I've had one resident who made a comment to me, they felt like the harbor was the dirtiest that it's ever been. And I know that you all, having been involved on the policy board before Gary, and working with Chenep over quite a few years, that you've really made an impact. And I think at one point in time, there was some data that was charts or things that were showing the improvement in the harbor over time. And I was wondering, is that in the Water Atlas, or is that something that you can point at least me to?
We do.
So we can share that with residents, so that it graphically depicts how the harbor has actually improved?
Yes, so we have a water quality status trends aspect of the Water Atlas that has several models that take all the data that, as it's being collected, and plug it in, and can map the trends in water clarity and water quality with regards to certain parameters. So we'd be happy to point you to the links where you can find that. That's being updated routinely. We work with the university system to house and update those models and that data. So it's constantly evolving and changing, but at any time, people can go on there and see what the conditions are, and then they can pick different time periods, like five to 10 years back, and look at how the trends are over time.
That would be great.
Understand that the typical layperson isn't going to understand the data. So we have to kind of make it almost much more simpler to understand for the typical person that isn't involved in it, because some of the data can get a little bit boring or technical when you're staring at the numbers, and then you can graph it, and it makes a little more sense, but even the graphs can be confusing to some people. We have one question for you, Jennifer. In light of the climates that are occurring, what's our status for future funding?
So the funding of the program right now is a bit up in the air. We are waiting for the federal budget. We're operating off of a continuing resolution right now, which basically keeps our funding steady, but doesn't give us our next year's budget. And we have been proposed for elimination by the president's budget and also by EPA itself. Congress, however, both the House and Senate Interior Appropriations Committees have recommended continued full funding for the program, so that's encouraging. But again, all this is still being sorted out, and we're awaiting that final federal budget to know whether we're going to have that core funding. As far as the state goes, there have been some bills introduced for other national estuary programs, like the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program, that would give consistent funding from the state level for that. We are not included in any of those bills. I have reached out to all the legislators in the CHNEP study area now twice to inform them about the opportunity to amend that bill. We're also reaching out to people on various committees in the state legislature to see if there's an opportunity to get included so that we could get a portion of those funds directed to water resource protection in this area.
Okay, is there any other areas that we could help you to help try to ensure this funding in the future? Because you're a great asset, not only environmentally, but also as the harbor comes back, it has the great economic asset to us. I see, we have Patty here from Fisherman's Village, sure, she can attest to it. The oyster project is very exciting. The replenishment of the seagrasses that we're seeing in the harbor are also very exciting, and ecotourism globally is increasing, and this could become one of our, an additional plum, if you will, or diamond for our economy from that respect. So if there's anything we can do, I would hope that we're able to step up and do as best we can to see that this program stays viable, because it certainly is an asset for Port Charlotte and specifically for Punta Gorda.
Well, one thing I've been meaning to do is to reach out to your lobbyist with the permission of your council and staff to see if we can coordinate our efforts and give them some of the fact sheets that we've developed to make sure that they understand what we're pushing for and maybe can help us as a different voice to explain the value of this program to local governments. Because that is, when you look at why we're being eliminated or suggested, proposed for elimination, it has mainly been that they believe that the state and local government should assume these responsibilities. But if that were the case, I mean, we try to explain to them that, first of all, you are stepping up and you are an active partner and financial contributor in the program, but if they lose this federal funding, that's, you know, $600,000 a year that was coming to this region to help support protection of our water resources. And just like any other infrastructure, we need to care for it. Natural infrastructure also needs to be maintained and cared for like man-made infrastructure. So we definitely could use your help getting that message out, and I think that you have a specially important voice as a local governmental entity to counteract that.
Yeah, if you get that to us, because we're going to Tallahassee at the end of January, so we'll be happy to carry that with Jerry Paul to even people outside of our area that can help us.
Wonderful, thank you.
And that's the other thing, is they come up with all the rules, but then they don't want to have to pay to fix the rules and the problems that they found that, you know, that have come up because of what they've given us to deal with. So we need to lead that charge as well. Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have recommendation from city officers. Howard.
The reason there wasn't much on the public hearing agenda is because the next council meeting is the public hearing for Vivante.
Okay.
So we will have a standing room only. And then the first meeting in February, Team Punta Gorda is going to present the Gilchrist Park Activity Center research, and we will also introduce the Long Range Financial Plan, which will start the budget process once again.
Thank you. City Attorney.
I have nothing. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. City Clerk.
Okay, under boards and committees, we have several announcements today. We have two vacancies on the building board, one for a regular seat and one alternate position. That's a continued vacant, two continued vacancies. We don't have any applications on file as of yet. We have an opening for an alternate position on the code enforcement board, and that would be an appointment for an unexpired term until April 5, 2019. We have a vacancy for another unexpired term on the Punta Gorda Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. That would be until May 18, 2019.
And just, you don't have to be a city resident for that position for the Punta Gorda Housing Authority. You just have to be a Charlotte County resident.
Correct, that's correct. Planning Commission has an opening for a regular seat, again, and lots of unexpired terms today, until August 7 of this year. Okay, those are our announcements. Under nominations, we have an unexpired term on the code enforcement board until October 4, 2019. There is one vacancy and one interested party, so if council would like to nominate and appoint, you may.
Mr. Brennan.
Mr. William Brennan, yes, excuse me.
Yeah, nominate and appoint. Second.
We have a motion, second, to nominate and appoint Mr. Brennan. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, carried unanimously.
Very good. And then under actual appointments, we have two vacancies on the Punta Gorda Isles Canal Advisory Committee and several applicants, Colleen Wright, Fred Hannan, Thomas Jeremiahson, Mike Kuharsky, Haskell Rett, and Tim Sullivan. They were all nominated at your last meeting, so I will pass voting forms out and ask that you vote for two.
All right, please stand by. Okay, the appointees are Fred Hannan and Colleen Wright.
Okay, thank you. Policy? Thank you, Mary. Policy and legislation, I don't have anything, nope. Councilmember comments? We'll start with Councilmember Cummings, since he has an item, and then after Councilmember comments, we will have citizens' comments.
All right, I'm just going to sum up things at Cooper Street this year, as well as new developments coming into the new year. Put my glasses. See, I'm at that age where, you know, you take your glasses off to see.
He's the baby on the group.
All right. One thing, there are a lot of new programs that started for the young kids, say with the K-35s. We have chess lessons and tennis lessons. There are multicultural fairs that are hosted by the Cultural Heritage Centers Southwest Florida, like every Thursday, different cultural, the kids are introduced to different cultures, things like that. We have, as you know, the renovation project, $103,000 was donated by the Selby Foundation. And so with that, the facility was made compliant, ADA compliant. We replaced six bathrooms, we replaced the split doors with regular doors, we replaced the round doorknobs with lever-style doorknobs, we painted the interior of the building, the parking lot was repaved by the city, there was a city job fair, very successful. Also, there was the opening of the Blanchard House Museum of African-American History there, as well as the Post-Secondary Resource Center for Education and Careers. Also, we've had a lot of teen dances on weekends. This year, we just entered into a relationship with the Boys and Girls Club, where they are handling the after-school program. And so with this partnership, it allows us to, Cooper Street is able to expand its youth programs to many more children, as well as to avail the children to Boys Club's programs. This allows Cooper Street now to put more resources towards the teen area. This is very important because of the fact that in the county in general, there's a very serious lack of services for teens, especially when it comes to career exploration and higher educational outreach. Because of the mandates that the state requires on the school board, the guidance counselors, which were only at a 1 to 700 ratio, they have to put their time into testing, and so they're not able to have as much contact with the kids as we would like in terms of helping them kind of visualize their future. So Cooper Street, we've established a full library of college resource information, job skill information, and then from this coming year, the New Image Project is going to be moving from Punta Gorda Middle School to Cooper Street, which that program, we call Tier One, dealt with children who had had behavioral problems, and they were paired with mentors who were high school kids, who became a new peer group with them, and just helped get them right. And there's an 86% non-recidivism rate in terms of the kids during that. So that program is being brought to Cooper Street, one, to expand the time, we want to be able to have the kids on a more reliable basis. It's harder to get the kids during the school day. Secondly, Tier Two of that program is we call Career Readiness, which is getting the kids ready really for visualizing their future from eighth grade on, which is where there's vision boarding activities, which are being brought by Drug Free Punta Gorda. You have activities, you have the Punta Gorda Library, which is offering college prep workshops, as well as SPAF/SPFA applications, things like that. We have Kaiser University is going to be offering ACT test assistance with the kids as well. At the library, we have applications for different universities, we have scholarship information, we have SPAF/SPFA information, we have, let's see what are we doing? Oh, also with this, the hope with putting all this together is we can be a new model for, we'll say, one of three teen centers in the county. At the last big teen meeting, or youth meeting we had, we determined that three areas, rather than everyone fighting for one area in the county, that we just acknowledged, the Punta Gorda has its needs, Port Charlotte has its needs, Inqua has its needs. So we're really the first in terms of really targeting the needs of teens, because also we got teens will be our adults. And also, we are in a situation where we have an economy that can be a lot more robust if we had a workforce that was ready for it. And so also, we have Florida Global Coastal University that's going to be offering like college days for the kids, as well as Western Michigan. They've expressed a lot of interest in having kids involved, aviation as well as the new health programs coming onboard, and just very good partnerships with that. And we're hoping that we can be a model for the county in terms of meeting these needs. And so just, we just feel like in a very good place, and this partnership with Boys Club has been very good, because it frees our resources that can be put more towards some of the older kids who've been neglected in the past.
So as far as the sign-ups go, pre and post Boys and Girls Club, could you give us some kind of report? Not today, but, because they're just starting.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Maybe at the end of the school year?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
I'd like to know, you know, the numbers.
Yes.
Any questions? No? Lynn, comments?
Nothing.
Nancy?
Just that the Pickleplex team is working with Boys and Girls Club on teaching pickleball, and it's part of their mission is to work with the youth, and so they're very excited about that, and that they've already met with them, and so more to come on that one. And then, Rachel, you mentioned, we're going to Tallahassee at the end of January. Can you elaborate more on that?
It's legislative days for the Florida League of Cities, and so Jerry Paul will take us around, but then we also go around with the league as well, and we lobby for the league, and then if we want to meet on city issues, Jerry Paul will help us with that. So I've been in contact with him and letting him know that, you know, what the days and times are. It's two days, like three days, really. So, and there's a board meeting, a Florida League of Cities board meeting as well.
Okay. Well, thank you.
We're going to storm Tallahassee.
Had not heard of that. When you mentioned it, you hadn't let us know about it, so I just thought I would ask.
It's the legislative days.
Okay, yep. Happy New Year.
Well, again, Happy New Year to everybody. It's going to be an exciting year. I want to welcome our new police chief. I'm excited that we're moving forward in that regard, and just looking forward to two weeks from now when we have a little bit more fuller crowd at the end of the day.
Okay, citizens' comments, any topic. Take this podium here, you have three minutes.
Be careful what you ask for.
Good morning.
Hi.
My name is Julia Moore. I live on the corner of Virginia and Malice. My, we're with the, I'm representing St. Mary and myself. I, we're a little bit concerned as to changing the names and think, I have no problem with that, but we're going to call it East Punta Gorda Historic, Historical? Is that the name that we want to come up with? East Punta Gorda has its own stigma already. No one wants to move into East Punta Gorda because of the press have made it the worst area in Punta Gorda. So, and when did we become historical? Because my, my, we have, they never told me. I applied for things through the city, and we weren't part of the Historical Society. It stopped at 41. If we are part of the Historical Society, why don't we look like they do on the West Side? Why are we looking for lighting when they've got it on the West Side, but we don't have it on the East Side? So what, let's think about this. You know, we want to work together, everybody wants to do the right thing, but if they can do pickleball court, spend money for all of that, but nothing is being done, we need the lighting. So what happens? The East Side is still being left out. So I understand there was funds for the homeowners in the Historical Society. Nobody knew anything about that. So is there or isn't there? Everybody that painted their house a beautiful green or whatever color they painted it, didn't do it on their own, they did it through the Historical Society. When they painted the houses in Punta Gorda, in the East Side, they painted them all the same color. Is that part of the Historical Society agenda, that they paint all the houses the same color? So this is something we need, if we're going to be a part, let's be an equal part. That's my concern, is what are we doing for the Historical Society on the East Side? I'm part of that, I would like to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Citizens' comments, any topic? Please make your way to the podium. You may form a line.
For the record, my name is Jocelyn Carter.
For the record, my name is Jocelyn Carter. I'm also a resident of, for all purposes, Cooper Street area of Punta Gorda. Just sitting as a concerned citizen today, I would like to speak to the rest of my cohorts here, expressing their concerns. Clearly, there is a difference of opinion, and that's okay, because everyone is not always going to agree. But I would admonish you, as city council has done today, if both entities could get together and speak. My biggest concern today is that we're in front of our city council, and there seems to be some sort of division. So if we could meet together, that's my biggest concern as a citizen today, because in the year coming, or how many ever months, in reference to the public hearings, other entities are going to galvanize together and unify before they present themselves at these public hearings, and we also would like to do the same. Just brainstorming, maybe instead of East Historical Society, maybe Punta Gorda Historic District, and we refer to ourselves as overlaying Zones One, Two, and Three, maybe. But my biggest concern is that we unify and hash out our issues as citizens so that we can present a unified front in front of city council going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Come up behind him if you'd like to speak.
Good morning. My name is Reverend Shaw. Kevin Shaw, for the record. I live in Charlotte Harbor, but I, I'm an assistant pastor at the First Macedonian Messenger Baptist Church. And I spent 27 years in the Marine Corps, and I know that communication or lack thereof is a problem anywhere. So understanding that if you don't have good communication on any part, if you exclude anybody out and make a decision, that's a problem. You don't have good communication in marriage, you're going to have a bad marriage. You don't have good communication within your city council, you're going to have a bad city council. So we need to sit down. Both parts have to sit down, because you're going to, if not, then you're going to create more problems than we're going to, than we're going to try to fix, you know? You can't leave anyone out, you can't disregard anybody's thoughts or feelings, and I just pray that, you know, both sides are able to sit down. I pray you all use your leadership in directing and instructing, instructing both parts, making sure that they have an equal voice, whatever the outcome, that they have an equal voice. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing nobody else, anybody? No, we are adjourned.